Minus four point eight percent from what we're reporting. So even for a statistically valid survey, the results are not perfect, but the margin of error is small. So here we have a map of the city. The red dots are households that completed the survey. So we had a good distribution throughout the city. The areas that are more densely populated had a greater number of completed surveys. And then the areas without dots are non-residential areas. And as we were administering the survey, we made sure that the demographics of survey respondents reflect the actual population of the city, especially for key demographic areas such as race, ethnicity, age, and gender. So here's what we learned from the survey. We found that residents have a positive perception of the city. Eighty-three percent of respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of life in Montrose. We also found that satisfaction with city services is higher in Montrose than other communities. You rate it above the U.S. average in thirty-one out of the forty-seven areas that we compared. We'll look at this in more detail in just a little bit, but one of the areas that really stood out is that satisfaction with customer service provided by city employees rated at thirty-one percentage points above the U.S. average. And that's one of the areas where you're rated the farthest above other cities. Overall, satisfaction with city services has increased since 2016. We'll also look at this in more detail in a little bit, but the most significant increases are primarily related to transportation, tourism, and communication.
Does transportation mean street infrastructure versus like bus service?
Uh, more street infrastructure.
Cool.
Yeah, yep, yep. And then the top overall priorities are traffic flow and congestion. That area has significant increase action satisfaction since 2016, which we'll get more detail in a little bit. Condition of city streets, overall code enforcement, and affordable housing. So first we'll look at some general perceptions residents have of the city. Here we asked residents how satisfied they are with the perceptions of the city in a number of different ways. You can see the dark blue are those who are very satisfied, light blue is satisfied, the gray is neutral, and we interpret neutral as average or meeting expectations. It's a rating of a three on the five-point scale, so not a bad rating, but not as good as the satisfied or very satisfied. And then the pink are those who are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So if you look at the top of the chart, you can see most respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of life in Montrose, with Montrose as a place to live, with the appearance of community parks. The areas with the highest dissatisfaction were the cost of living, then access to quality affordable housing. This was the very first question on the survey. Here we asked residents how satisfied they are with major categories of city services. So here we asked residents to rate these areas at the big picture departmental level, and then later on in the survey, we asked about some more specific areas within some of these categories. So again, the blue were the positive ratings, the pink are the negative. Overall, the positive ratings far outweigh the negative. If you look at the top of this chart, residents gave very high satisfaction ratings to trash, recycling, and yard waste, wastewater, drinking water, city parks and open spaces, customer service from city employees, and police services. There were only two areas that had more dissatisfied residents than satisfied, and those were traffic flow and the overall condition of city streets. So here again, we have a map of the city, and we broke the results out by census block groups. So these are fairly small areas, and this tells us if residents in different parts of the city are rating services differently or have different perceptions of the city. We created a map like this for every question on the survey asked in the five-point scale, so the report has about ninety to ninety-five maps. This one is for the overall quality of life in Montrose. You can see the entire map is blue, and in fact, quite a bit of it is dark blue, which is the highest possible rating. So this tells us that residents in all parts of the city are satisfied with the overall quality of life in Montrose. So I mentioned earlier that satisfaction with city services is higher in Montrose than other communities. Montrose rated above the U.S. average in thirty-one out of the forty-seven areas that we compared, and you rate significantly higher, so in other words, five percent or more, in twenty-four of those areas. You also rated above the mountain regional average in thirty out of forty-seven areas. The mountain region average includes the state of Colorado as well as some surrounding states, and you rate significantly higher than the regional average in twenty-eight of those areas. So for these next few charts, the dark blue line are Montrose residents who are either very satisfied or satisfied, the light blue are the satisfaction ratings for residents in the mountain region, and then the gray are the satisfaction ratings for residents from all across the U.S. And this is based on a national survey that ETC Institute conducts with residents all across the country on an annual basis. So as we go through these charts, the blue arrows mean your ratings are significantly above both the regional and national average. The red arrows mean your ratings are significantly below the regional and national average. So this first chart's for major categories of city services. You can see there are seven areas where your ratings are significantly above other communities. That includes trash, recycling, and yard waste, wastewater, drinking water, parks and open spaces, customer service provided by city employees. I mentioned earlier, that's one of the areas where you rate the farthest above other communities. You have a seventy percent satisfaction rating, the national average is only thirty-nine percent. Police services also rates significantly higher than other cities. And then communication with the public. You have a forty-nine percent satisfaction rating with communication, which might seem like a low number by itself, especially compared to some of the other areas, but you can see the regional and national average are both below forty percent. So forty-nine percent's actually a really good number for communication. The only areas that rate significantly below are other communities, our traffic flow, and then overall condition of city streets. These comparisons are for different aspects of public safety. You can see your ratings are much higher when it comes to how quickly police respond to emergencies, and as well as animal control services. Enforcing traffic laws is on par with other communities. The one area that does rate lower is crime prevention efforts. Then we asked residents how safe they feel in various situations. If you look at the second row down, you can see that overall seventy-seven percent of respondents feel safe in Montrose, which is much higher than other cities. It's more than ten percentage points higher than the national average, which is sixty-six percent. Residents also feel safe in their neighborhood, both during the day and at night. The two areas that do rate lower than other communities are street lighting and then how safe residents feel in city parks. Here, these are comparisons for different public services. You can see your ratings are significantly higher than other communities when it comes to trash services, recycling, and then sewer services. These comparisons are for different aspects of maintenance. You're rated much higher than other communities when it comes to the maintenance of city buildings, the cleanliness of city streets and public areas, mowing and trimming along streets and public areas. The only area that rates significantly below other communities is maintenance of sidewalks. And then for communication, for a lot of these areas, your ratings are a little above the regional average, kind of right on par with the national average. The one area that rates significantly higher is the availability of information about city programs and services. The one area that does rate lower is the quality of programming on local government TV channels. Thing I would keep in mind about that is about two-thirds of respondents didn't have an opinion on this question, selected don't know. So that's based on a much smaller sample than a lot of the other categories on the So now we'll switch gears and compare these results to your previous survey in 2016. We compared these results to 2016. These satisfaction ratings have increased in fifty out of ninety-three areas. They've stayed exactly the same in one area, and then decreased in forty-two areas. There are nineteen areas that have had a significant increase in satisfaction, so in other words, five percent or more higher than 2016. Fifteen areas that has significant decrease in satisfaction. So here are the areas with the biggest increases in satisfaction since 2016. Ease of travel by car, the availability of paved walking and biking trails, customer service at retail businesses, the downtown visitor center, the availability of bike lanes, job opportunities, the timeliness and frequency of information provided on social media, and then the ability to report issues and ideas through the city's mobile app. So you can see that really all of these most significant increases are related to transportation, tourism, and communication. Here are the biggest decreases in satisfaction since the last survey. Biggest decreases are to affordable housing and cost of living. Those are trends we've seen all over the country. The other biggest decreases are related to crime prevention, code enforcement, visibility of police officers, feeling of safety in city parks, municipal court services, then the feeling of safety in commercial and retail areas. Seeing a decrease in satisfaction related to public safety is also a trend we've seen all over the country over the past few years, so not a huge surprise based on what we've seen in other communities. So this chart's for that question about major categories of city services. The dark blue are the satisfaction ratings for the survey we just completed. The gray bar are the satisfaction ratings for 2016. The blue arrows means there's been a significant increase in satisfaction since 2016. The red arrows mean a significant decrease. So you can see there have been five areas with a significant increase in satisfaction over the past seven years. That includes trash, recycling, and yard waste, wastewater, management of stormwater, economic development. That was one of the higher priorities on the survey last time in 2016. And then traffic flow. Traffic flow is one of the lowest rate areas on your survey, but you can see there's been a significant increase in satisfaction since 2016. In 2016, twenty-one percent of respondents were satisfied with traffic flow. Now it's all the way up to twenty-nine percent. Then there are three areas that have had significant decrease in satisfaction since the last survey. Police services, which again, that's a trend we've seen nationwide. And then keep in mind also, when we compared your results to other communities, the ratings for police services were still significantly higher than the regional and national average. The other biggest decreases were related to municipal court services and code enforcement. And then here are comparisons for perceptions of the community. There have been small increases in satisfaction in a lot of areas, such as the overall quality of life, Montrose as a place to live, the appearance of parks. The biggest increase was related to job opportunities. And then the two areas that had significant decreases were the cost of living and then access to quality affordable housing. So now we'll look at the top priorities on the survey. So we saw earlier how satisfied residents are with major categories of city services. As a follow-up question, we asked residents which of these services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders over the next two years. You can see by far the top two priorities are traffic flow and the condition of city streets. The other highest priorities are code enforcement, economic development, police services, and then parks and open spaces. But clearly, the traffic congestion and streets are by far the top two highest priorities. This is something that we call the important satisfaction rating. This analysis is based on two different types of data. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with city services. Then we asked which of these services should receive the most emphasis from city leaders. So the idea behind this is that those items that have a combination of low satisfaction, but at the same time are the most important, should be the highest overall priorities. The reason we like to factor in both of those is you could have a situation where, say, satisfaction is low, but that doesn't necessarily mean that residents want to invest a lot of resources into that area. So this factors in both level of satisfaction and importance when setting priorities. So the areas in pink are the highest priorities. The yellow are second-tier priority, and then the gray or the green are more of a median priority. This doesn't mean that the areas in green don't need any attention, but making improvements to areas in pink and yellow will impact the greatest number of residents. So you can see, this is for major categories of city services. The highest priorities The highest priorities, traffic flow and condition of streets, are by far the top two, but also code enforcement fell into the very high priority category. Also, economic development is a high priority. This comparison is charged specifically for maintenance. You can see the two areas that are the highest priorities are the overall maintenance of city streets and then sidewalks. Also, a high priority is for maintaining major roadways, and then snow removal on city streets. And then for public safety, the highest priorities are overall crime prevention efforts, enforcing local traffic laws, code enforcement, and then a second-tier priority was visibility of police officers. And then on this chart, we look at some specific aspects of code enforcement. You can see there are four areas in the pink, but the one that really rates much higher than the others is that top row, which is cleanup of debris and junk on private property. So now we'll take a look at some other survey findings. Here we ask residents which of these issues they would like to see addressed through a community engagement process, and respondents could pick as many of these as they wanted. So you can see the top priorities are lack of affordable housing, homelessness, drug abuse, and addiction. Now, as a follow-up question to that, we asked which of these issues to receive the most attention from the community organizations over the next three years? And here, respondents could pick just which two they felt were the highest priorities. So now you can see, the top priority, really by a pretty wide margin, is affordable housing. If you look at that dark blue line, that's the percent of respondents who picked that as their number-one choice, as the number-one issue over the next three years. So a little over forty percent selected affordable housing as their top priority. Your the highest priorities were homelessness and drug abuse and addiction. Here, we asked respondents which of these projects to beautify the community should receive the most emphasis over the next five years. We had a number of things rated pretty closely together, but the highest priorities were northern gateway, public parking lots and downtown alleyways, the eastern gateway, and then undergrounding overhead utilities. Here, we asked residents to indicate their main sources of information about city issues, services, and events. The top source of information is social media, followed by the newspaper. Newspaper was a top priority last time we conducted the survey back in 2016. Social media was fairly high, but it wasn't first. The other highest main sources of information are the city newsletter, the water and sewer bill insert, and then your website. So that shows how residents are currently getting information. As a follow-up, we asked what are your most preferred sources of information? And you can see the most preferred sources align very well with the way that residents are currently getting information, which is good. It means residents are finding information in the way that they most prefer. So the most preferred source is social media. The other most preferred sources are the newspaper, the city newsletter, your website, and then water and sewer bill inserts. So that's everything that I had. Just a quick recap, we saw that residents have a positive perception of the city. Most respondents are satisfied with the overall quality of life in Montrose, as well as Montrose has a place to live. Satisfaction with city services is higher in Montrose than other communities. The area that stood out the most was customer service from city employees, but we saw there are a lot of other areas where your ratings are significantly higher than other communities. Overall, the satisfaction has increased a little bit since 2016, especially when it comes to transportation, tourism, and communication. And then the top overall priorities are traffic flow, overall condition of streets, overall code enforcement, and affordable housing. Perfect timing.
I got a question. My question is, can you go back to the two slides back, I believe, that said to overall satisfaction, yep, with city services? Yes. And then transportation was in there, and earlier you said that transportation had to do with streets.
Correct.
But then, as you were going through the statistics, it looked like people thought streets were a serious problem, just looking at the numbers. So how do those two match up?
Streets is definitely one of the lowest-rated areas, one of the lower-rated areas, and one of the highest priorities for residents. But there have been significant improvements still since the last survey in 2016. In 2016, for example, only twenty-one percent of respondents were satisfied with traffic flow. This year, it's at twenty-nine percent. So it's still a low number, still a lot of room for improvement, but it's improved significantly since the last survey.
Okay, I've got a couple. First of all, one of them is...
We have four hundred and thirteen participants in the community, and we have thousands of people living in the city of Montrose. What's the percentage of people that got involved, and how did you determine that four hundred was adequate?
Right. Four hundred is a typical sample size for a city the size of Montrose. Really, even for cities up to forty or fifty or even sixty thousand residents, the typical goal was four hundred completed surveys. So that's just kind of an industry standard. There are two things that have to happen in order for the results to be considered statistically valid, which means that these results represent the entire community, even though it is a seemingly small sample. One is that households are selected at random to participate in the survey, so every household in the city had an equal chance of being randomly selected to receive a survey. And then the second thing that has to happen is that the demographics of survey respondents need to compare to the actual demographics of the city. So it's not enough to just have four hundred completed surveys. You have to make sure you have to have a good representation from key demographic areas, such as age, race, ethnicity, and gender.
Okay. Another question is, you were taught, it was like a second, and it was like the quality of economic development, and what with that... What information are we going to derive from that? Is there something in there that says, okay, people would prefer to have different types? What types of businesses or jobs or whatever would the city be looking for, the residents?
You know, we didn't dig too deep on that topic. The way the question was worded was just kind of overall economic development. So that was a fairly broad category. Now, that was actually even a higher priority on your last survey. There've been improvements in that area, so it wasn't quite as high of a priority this year as it was in 2016.
The last one is the quality of police services. What are people looking at in the sense that our police department's not providing them? I think they're doing a great job, but what are they asking for in their rating that they rated the police as a problem?
Yeah. So police services. Now, when we compare it to other communities, the ratings are actually really good. There's been a decrease in satisfaction since the 2016 survey, but that's a trend we've seen all over the country. So that's not a surprise. Even with those decreases, we saw the ratings are still significantly higher than the regional and national average. We asked about several specific aspects of police services. We asked about visibility of police officers, enforcing traffic laws, how quickly police respond to emergencies, overall crime prevention. How quickly police respond to emergencies rated really well. The areas that decreased a little bit were visibility of police officers. Forcing traffic laws decreased a little bit. So some of those are some of the areas with some of the bigger decreases in satisfaction. But I would just keep in mind that even though there have been decreases, overall the ratings are still very, very good. If we go back to that slide... So here are Montrose's results compared to the regional and national average. Police services is that sixth row down. Sixty-eight percent of your residents are satisfied with police services. So that is down from 2016, but the regional average is only forty-seven percent, national average is only fifty-three percent. So those are still very, very good numbers.
Other questions?
How we can use this information to make Montrose better if we didn't get quite down into some of the more specifics as to what we need to give us an idea. We're just out there picking up ideas and saying, hey, we're going to try this, and we're going to try this.
Sure. And today, I'm going through these results at a fairly high level. That map I showed you where we broke the results out by census block groups, so those are fairly small areas. We also broke the results out for the police questions, as well as all of these satisfaction questions by geographic area. We're also going to do some analysis where we break the results out by key demographic areas, such as age, race, and ethnicity, gender, to see if there are differences among different types of residents or among different areas of the city. So this is really kind of just going through these results at a fairly high level.
I think it's interesting to see that if you put our budget next to these items, you would see that we are, that we, there's not a lot of surprises in this report, and the things that we have prioritized in our budget are the things, you're nodding, the things that we see the community saying they want us to prioritize. It would sure be a wake-up call if we were prioritizing streets and sidewalks, and the residents were all saying, oh, those are great. You really need to be prioritizing trash and recycling, which our residents seem to be happy with. So I do think it aligns with, you know, it's been budget season, we've talked about that, we'll be voting on our 2024 budget. It seems to me we're spending money in the areas that our residents would say they feel as priority. We're not asking them budget questions, but really, we are. I mean, this...
Yeah, absolutely.
It would be interesting maybe to put some of this information in our budget presentation. I mean, you know, why are we spending millions more on streets each year? Why does our police department make up forty-three percent of the general fund plus the additional two-way money? And I think this is why. Cool?
Yeah, absolutely.
And just to interject a couple of points, one of the reasons that we appreciate the partnership with ETC is to add the perspective that Jason included throughout his presentation, both regionally, nationally, and to our own results in previous surveys, and how that provides perspective to other city actions that have already occurred or are pending. Progress in transportation reflects that we've set good priorities, those have gotten results. There's more work to be done, but I think we all understand that, and we're moving forward. Same is true with law enforcement services. That's a community priority, as expressed through public safety sales tax and other areas, and that is obviously a priority. They want to continue to see action in that area. I also like to add that when all of the survey materials are ready, we'll have those available on our website, citymontrose.org/survey. Same location where other survey information was held previously. And forthcoming, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have a data dashboard, which is a web-based tool that allows residents, anyone who's interested, to really look at the data. And maybe you could say a little bit more about the data dashboard and what it'll provide.
Yeah, sure. So far, we've provided a PDF report of the results. We're also in the process of creating a dashboard. So we'll provide a link to a dashboard, and it has all the results that are in the full report, but it also will allow you to dig even deeper into the data, to analyze the results at a more in-depth level, or if you just want to look at kind of the overall key findings. We're also going to include the 2016 results on the dashboard, so we'll have the results from both surveys. And you'll see, it'll have a lot of the same information. Comparisons between the two years, comparisons to a regional and national average. There'll be a map where you can see the differences among different parts of the city. There'll be important satisfaction priorities, like I went through, which show the highest priorities in different areas, and you'll be able to sort the results by different demographic questions as well. So it's a really great tool. We're in the process of working on that. Should be ready within the next few weeks or so.
Great. I've got a big-picture question for you. Normally, we would have done the survey sooner than 2023, but I think we wanted to kind of make sure that the survey results weren't influenced by COVID. And that must be something as the company that goes around and does all these surveys, do you think that we waited long enough and that these results, that the impacts of COVID and people's mindsets, how they might have answered these questions two years ago, that we're past that doing the survey in 2023?
I do think, I do think we're past that. In 2020 and 2021, the results, yeah, they were very different.
There were cities that were doing the survey in 2021?
There were, yeah. Now, the first part of 2020, a lot of people pushed their survey back. We have a lot of clients who conduct these surveys on a regular basis, like every other year, probably the most frequent timeframe. Some do it even annually, some more every three to four years. So the first part of 2020, a lot of cities push their survey back to later in the year or even delay it to 2021. In some cases, even, we're just now, you know, doing their survey again. So I think, yeah, I mean, overall, the satisfaction ratings just generally across the board seem lower now than they were when we last conducted your survey. So that makes it especially impressive that overall, the results are even a little bit better overall than they were in 2016. Certainly not everywhere, but just, you know, in general. But I think we're kind of to a new normal now. We're past, you know, I think we're past to whatever we're going to be now post-COVID.
But you definitely saw folks who, there are cities that did surveys in 21 maybe being affected by that, just survey results that were a little bit like, well, remember, people are taking the survey right now while there's still maybe a lot of uncertainty or unanswered questions, or things are different?
Right, yeah. Like, for example, ratings for code enforcement went down pretty much across the country during, like in late 2020, early 2021. Our theory is that people were at home a lot more often and just noticing things they didn't notice before.
Okay, yeah, stuff like that.
Well, now that it seemed to come back to where they were before.
Okay.
Also, it seemed like satisfaction and just the need and interest in outdoor things, such as parks, increased during COVID. People seemed to have more of a need to want to be outdoors more often. Satisfaction with a lot of programming, like recreation programming, was down during COVID, because things were just either not offered at all, or offered at more limited hours, or with more rules. So, yeah, there are a number of differences in 2020 and 2021, things like that.
Yeah.
But I think now we're kind of, kind of past that, and kind of at a new normal.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was really informative.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Item C is a trash truck repair ratification. I think this is bad news that we're not getting our new trash trucks sooner, as soon as we had hoped. Okay. Shane, you want to tell us about our trash truck situation?
I would be glad to.
Make sure the mic is close to you and on. It's the only way that, like, Dave Frank is on Zoom, it's the only way he can hear you. Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I'm here to recommend considering the ratification of an emergency repair to a trash truck, unit number three sixty-four, for a complete engine replacement. For forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. The repair was quoted at thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five, but since there's a few unknown variables, we recommend a ten percent contingency included in that overall amount of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. A little background, unit three sixty-four was to be replaced in 2022, and delivery of that replacement has been delayed quite a few times. We are expecting that delivery at the end of 2024. So we are seeing some major mechanical failures with this unit, but...
Can you, Dave Frank says he can't hardly hear you. Can you put that really close to your mouth, maybe?
Yes.
Even closer.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So we're seeing some major mechanical failures with this particular unit, including the actual engine itself. So basically, time is of the essence. We need an engine in that truck, so... So holiday weeks are coming, and we do need an additional truck, and this is the additional This particular repair is about 45 days out due to supply chain issues, getting the engine ordered, getting it installed and everything. We're, our plan is to get it up and running before the Thanksgiving holiday week. So this is a large purchase that is not specifically mentioned in the 2023 budget. So it, the amount included will exceed the budget for the repairs for the trash recycle. This emergency recommendation has been approved by city management due to the critical nature of the repair and will be, I'm presenting it to you guys now for ratification. Overall financial impact, this is an unbudgeted, like I mentioned, and would be charged to the interfund lease for trash recycle for their repair. And this may require a supplemental budget.
Right, and that's why it's coming to us. It's not in the budget, it's, yeah. Are we going to be, so this is so critical, I don't think I saw this on tomorrow night's agenda, but we would need to vote on it. Is there, is there a reason we're waiting two weeks to vote on this? I don't know if anyone knows the answer.
I think because the work has already been started, basically, the city manager's office authorized this to happen so that we weren't delayed by a vote. I know we've had this discussion many, many times in budget meetings and in these types of meetings with the concern for trash trucks that are operational. We've had a really hard time with that specific vehicle, trying to get it ordered in here.
Right.
So I do know that these, that is why it was pushed to the November 7th agenda, just because it wasn't, now it's not really time-sensitive. If you say no, we won't pick up the trash.
Right, I get it now. We're ratifying, we're ratifying the decision that's already been made as opposed to authorizing the expense. And when we're ratifying a decision that's already been made, that isn't time-sensitive in the same way that approving, got it. So we'll see, we'll see this on our agenda in the beginning of November to ratify this decision that's been made.
I do have one question.
Okay. Just make sure it's loud.
So, once the repairs are done, this is put back into service, the new truck is delivered end of 2024, this truck will still stay in service after that?
Yeah, depends on, since we're still a year out, basically, is if there's another trash truck that's in worse condition, that one will go. So we'll reevaluate that when the trucks arrive to see which one is in worse condition, and then the worst one will go.
Got you. Thank you.
And maybe this one, it may not.
We've had a hard time sourcing new trash trucks. Any questions from council on this? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Shane. Thanks for coming to council and telling us about it. Oh, yeah, we skipped that one, sorry. Let's, I skipped that one. Let's back up. We have a, yeah, we have two trash truck things. I went straight to repairing one. We have also a used trash truck purchase ratification. Again, probably because we're not getting our trash trucks, we're looking at buying a used one. Can you tell us about that?
I would be honored to. I would like to consider the ratification, again, of a purchase of a used 2019 Peterbilt refuse truck with a Scorpion body for $219,800 from Elliott Equipment in Commerce City, Colorado. Little background, since 2021, the city has budgeted and ordered three trash trucks. We have not seen them yet, but we are projecting the arrival in late 2024. This delay has severely impacted the trash recycle operation, and the trucks that are, that were due for replacement are wearing out and causing, are having major breakdowns, including that full engine replacement that we just discussed. Overall maintenance costs are up about 50% since 2021 and continuing to climb. And that situation has pushed us to research other opportunities, which is a used truck from Elliott Equipment. And this, the Peterbilt with a Scorpion body fits our fleet perfectly. That's, we have multiple trucks that are Peterbills and Scorpion bodies, so it fits us very well. The truck would be available in about 30 days and would help extremely with the holiday weeks that are coming up. Due to the holiday weeks, the, they make the trash collection extra difficult with the extra day off, so they have to push another truck and another driver to just try to keep up, not to mention with multiple breakdowns that we're, we just constantly deal with due to the age of the trucks. This purchase was authorized by city management to allow the truck to be put on hold and delivered to Montrose as soon as possible. Since this purchase is over $50,000, it is being presented to city council as a ratification of the purchase due to the time-sensitive nature of this purchase. And I've got the financial impact. Trash and Recycle budgeted for an additional truck in 2022, and this truck would take the place of that additional truck, and so there was $350,000 budgeted. And this truck is only $219,800, which is a savings of $130,200, which we recommend putting that into the fleet fund for its replacement, since it's a used truck. Any questions?
That all makes a lot of sense. Sorry for going out of order. It would have made more sense if I'd done them in the right order, I think, but thanks for being flexible.
No worries. I'm the one talking trash. I'm sorry, everybody.
I think, I think the, the move by city management to approve these and then seek our ratification is really key. As we just saw on the community survey, people are really happy with our trash and recycling service, and that's because we routinely pick up their trash when they expect it to be picked up. And we can't really go into the holiday season and tell folks that we're not picking up their trash. So I don't think we had any other choice but to do these, and I appreciate the department all working probably really hard to find a replacement, to find a used one, to get the engine repaired, all the work that you guys have been done. It sure would have been easier if you had just taken delivery of the new ones that you had been planning on. So thanks for all the work. I'm sure there was a lot of scrambling behind the scenes.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move forward to item D, which is the Blowers addition annexation, and our city planner, William Reese, is going to tell us about this addition annexation.
Thank you and good morning, Madam Mayor and members of city council. As always, I do have a brief presentation to share. So we have received another annexation application, and this morning obviously serves as our city council work session overview. We do plan to bring a resolution setting the hearing date before you on November 7th, and then planning commission happens to fall in that same week, so we would bring that on November 8th. Due to the holiday season coming up, we will need to schedule the official hearing for January 2nd, assuming you do vote to approve that resolution, followed by a second reading on January 16th. The Blowers addition is a 15.22 acre annexation, which consists of three separate parcels located along 6450 Road, slightly south of its intersection with Lincoln Road. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city sewer service area and the city water service area. Annexation will allow the property to connect to utilities. The area is urbanizing, and with the properties combined, the perimeter does meet the state's contiguity requirements. The surrounding area consists of RL Rural Living District, R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District, some I-1 Light Industrial District, which is the airport property, and areas outside of city limits. The applicant is requesting RL Rural Living District for this annexation, which is intended to provide for farms, ranches, and cluster development with open space, and is designed to dovetail with the allowed county residential densities. There is a bit of a weird quirk with the RL zoning district. Every other residential zoning district in the city does have a minimum lot size, which is outlined in the code. However, for RL, and only for RL, our code states that the minimum lot size for any annexation of RL is determined as a condition of the zoning ordinance. This is also brought to planning commission. They will also make a recommendation of that minimum lot size, which will eventually come before you, assuming they do recommend approval of the RL zoning. They will also need to recommend that minimum lot size, and the applicant has requested the minimum lot size of one acre here. That is pretty consistent with the size of the two northern properties. This is the annexation plat itself, which shows the contiguity. As mentioned, this consists of three separate properties, all being annexed together, as well as a small sliver of right-of-way. According to the future land use map, this area is listed as residential mixed density low, which primarily provides for single-family homes and small amounts of attached residential development, namely duplexes or townhomes. A part of the, the western portion of the property is designated as employment center, although this is intended more for the airport property that's adjacent, since the future land use map doesn't follow exact property lines. The property is within Growth Area 1, which represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow and indicates available utilities or proximity to utilities. And in summary, the area is urbanizing and meets the state annexation requirements. An annexation agreement will be recorded, and because this is more than 10 acres, an annexation impact report will be required. We will submit that to the county. We do find that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Nope, looks pretty straightforward. It doesn't look like council has any questions. And Mr. Frank, I can't see you, but I assume if you had a question, you would just start talking, so. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing this on an upcoming agenda. Next up, item E, proposed amendments to municipal code, section 11-7-12, related to rezoning and initial zoning of annexed property. And I'll turn this over to our planning manager, Jase Hawke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Hopefully, this is a pretty brief, just summary of what we're looking at. I don't have a formal presentation, but as we went through our code consolidation process over the last year, right now, we're refining it. One of those refinements staff noticed was within the rezone and initial zoning section of the land development regulations. This is the new Title 11. So specifically, what we wanted to do here in this red-lined document is within the packet, is clarify the roles of planning commission and city council. We have a grid within our current land use regulations that reflects when a hearing's required and for whom it is required. We just wanted our code to align with that more clearly, as it didn't in the past. So really, what this change is reflecting is that for any rezone, basically what happens is an applicant would bring forth a recommendation to city staff. We would talk through that recommendation with the applicant. That would then go to a formal hearing to planning commission, who would make a recommendation to either move forward or basically approve that designation or deny that designation. That recommendation would then move forward to city council as either an approval or denial, and you could ratify that decision or you could reverse that decision. So that's exactly what the code is reflecting here. One other minor tweak we made is, one issue that's come up in the past, and this was with a recent project for Cobble Creek South, was there was some conditional zoning that was done in the past, and that's subsection E, or excuse me, subsection 3 there, and what this would do is remove that and revise that wording to state, "The city shall not impose conditions on a rezone unless otherwise required by this title." What that means, great example from William Reese, is when the title, or when the code does require a condition, RL is a great example of this, that density requirement is required to be outlined within the ordinance, that is when it applies, but it wouldn't allow council to just apply conditions as they see fit. Better practice to do that would be a plan development or within the annexation agreement itself. So that's for the rezone, and there's really no change as far as the zoning of additions or the zoning of new annexations. Again, we're just revising that wording to fit exactly how a rezone would go, essentially that that zoning recommendation would go to planning commission, and then planning commission would recommend, and city council would make that final decision. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's really just more of clarifying our current code to modernize as we continue to do.
Thank you very much. It looks great. Thanks for cleaning that up.
I have a question.
Okay.
On that last one about the city not imposing conditions on initial zoning unless otherwise required by this title. Now, if somebody comes in for a rezone to a higher density, but yet there's, I don't, at least I haven't found anything yet, that indicates that somebody, how do we require somebody that asks for a higher density to actually put higher density in rather than single-family houses, put in multifamily units, that sort of stuff? It seems that we talk about trying to provide affordable housing, but yet a developer comes in, gets a higher density, and then builds single-family residence and, and doesn't do multifamily at all in a residential area that allows it.
Yeah.
Does that exclude deed restrictions when we do? We couldn't put a restriction on it that you require, say, 5% of a, of a rezone to put in multifamily?
A better method for any sort of conditions like that would be a different process. The rezone process should, should be pretty cut and dry in terms of what the zoning designation is, and then as far as conditions applied to, let's say, a proposal, that would likely come in the, at the time of a plan development proposal or even a subdivision proposal, but it shouldn't happen at the time of the rezone or the zoning specifically. And the reason for that is because the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily carry with the title. So when somebody, let's say, a property is rezoned, and this has happened, a property is rezoned 20 years ago, and there's conditions within that rezone, it's a real struggle for the owner to even be aware of those conditions, and also sometimes even staff to be. So it's better for any conditions to be carried through with an actual recorded document, let's say, at time of annexation, which would be an annexation agreement, or at time of a development plan, which would be a time of a plan development proposal that comes in front of us. Now, specific to your question about the zoning and, let's say, minimum density requirements, that's something that we actually talked about a little bit this last week with the housing discussion, is looking at some possible minimum density thresholds to where a developer actually would have to construct between certain parameters as far as units, so they couldn't build single-family. Now, that's not solidified at this point in time, but that is a code, possible code modification to look at that will bring more information to council on moving forward. So hopefully that, tried to kind of answer everything, hopefully that clarifies it, but if there's anything more, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. The next and last item for discussion is the proposed fee schedule revisions for 2024, and I'll turn this over to our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo, who maybe, can you start with just context that this is how, under one structure, we point everything towards a fee schedule instead of them being all over the place? Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is for sure a team effort. Everyone here who suggested changes.
Really close to the mic.
Okay, there we go.
Because Dave, Dave keeps texting me, he can't hear unless people are like right next to it.
[inaudible].
So this absolutely is a group effort. We, we open up the fee schedule to department heads in the fall, and they make proposed changes. We bring these proposed changes to city council at a work session, and then the goal is to have them adopted with the first reading of the budget ordinance, and they take effect on January 1st of 2024. We like the fee schedule to be comprehensive, include all of the fees that we charge, and have them be current. And so there is, in the meeting packet, there's a version of the 2023 fee schedule that has the proposed changes in red, and then there is a memo that, that is just kind of an overview of everything that is proposed. So if it's okay with council, I'll just start. And I regret that I start with a correction, actually. So in Section 311, under administrative fees, I got a little overzealous with the strikeout. And actually, that fee, the home occupation fee will remain as $25, but the move to Title 11 is actually going to be a reference in the right-hand column.
What is a home occupation fee? What?
It's, yeah, home occupation would be, you know, some sort of home-type business, not like a retail business, but let's say, an accountant wants to work from their home. In theory, they could, they just would need a home occupation permit before that. I think, oddly enough, I recall this, seeing this in a lot of codes, it was used for like Tupperware sales, maybe a couple decades back, but yeah, interesting little reference there.
Thank you.
Then the next section with proposed changes is land use, and Jace is here to address those changes.
And I won't, no need to go line by line, just for the specific fact that this really is, again, aligning with the, the new code. So we consolidated some areas specific to subdivisions. There were some redundancies within the existing fee schedule that were fixed and modified. No increases in fees or anything along those lines, just simplifying and consolidating is what you'll see, and then all the reference changes that, that were made to it.
Then under Section 311F, which is parks and private use of public property, there's only one proposed change, and that's under the amphitheater. The plan is to put in ice machine, or ice cooler that will be stocked, and so this would cover the cost of ice use for each person who uses the facility. And then under Section H, the building code fees, there were some changes toward the bottom of that section, as proposed by Archie Byers. We removed the distinction of residential or commercial under plumbing and gas费 fees, and just made one fee of $50. And then there was a mechanical permit fee, solar permit fee, re-roof permit fee, and demolition permit fee added. And then at the very end, we added the fire protection district fees as an exhibit at the very end of the fee schedule.
And those are their fees, the fire district fees?
Those are their fees, yes.
We're just, so that if a resident wants to find out what fees are, they're aware, hey, there are also fire protection district fees you want to be aware of?
Exactly. So it's information only, is my understanding.
Yep, yeah, just to be more fully transparent, to show those is the key there.
Okay.
Okay. And then under Section 3-1-2, that's the pavilion fee schedule. We updated fees to remove items that we're no longer charging for, and then we raised fees about 10%, sometimes more, just to be competitive with other event facilities in the area. We don't want to be undercutting. And there's one, if you notice, the, the pit cover removal, that one went up significantly because apparently it takes every staff member at the pavilion to remove it, and we very, very rarely remove it, so.
That would be the, tell us what a pit cover removal is.
So that would be the orchestra pit in the auditorium, and apparently, it's, it's quite a project to remove it and put it back. So we tried to just gauge what staff time it would take to do that, and fortunately, we never had requests for that. But we could.
Okay. But it doesn't, that's not going to impact all of the users of the auditorium. It does, it rarely gets used, but it is labor-intensive.
Exactly. Danny Kinimaka has been at the pavilion for 10 years, and he said they've never removed the pit cover. So we are able to do it, but it would cost that amount.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last section that we've made proposed changes to is 3-1-3, and that's the fee schedule for water, sewer, and trash. And Shani can explain those changes.
Good morning. So the water, sewer, and trash fees have been proposed in the schedule to increase the same amount as we talked on September 7th at the retreat with you all about the 2024 budget. There are a couple in here that we rounded, such as the private fire line fee. Instead of going up just 5%, we rounded to $20. The rest of them are right in line with that 5% for water and sewer. There was one other one that we did a little bit of a rounding to, which was just the construction water fee. So if somebody's constructing a house, we just collect a flat fee. We don't meter the water at that point. So we increased it from $60 to $65. In the sewer portion of the code, as soon as I get there again, we, everything has increased 5%. There was one omission, which was several years ago when we went to, when we moved all of the fees out of the code into the regulations, and it was the E1 pump maintenance fee. So that fee was not moved, it didn't get removed from the code, it just wasn't moved to the schedule. So we've added it to the schedule, and you'll see that on page 38 of your packet, it's at the very bottom, and it's $5 per month, which is still pretty low, and we'll study that this next year and maybe make different suggested changes in 2025. The trash and recycle fees went up 20% as discussed and surveyed earlier in the year. So everything is in, basically in alignment with what we discussed at the retreat when we were talking through fees and funding our enterprise funds, water, sewer, and trash.
Right. To, just to elaborate on that, we looked extensively at the data around our current fees and our current costs, and as enterprise funds, staff made recommendations to how we could not deplete all the funds in those enterprise funds, and that it would require in raising fees. So we, we did have an extensive discussion about this.
Correct, correct. Looking at the capital projects going forward, and then trash and recycling really is kind of a, not anomaly, but it's just crazy how fast we're growing, and the fact that we can't get trucks. So these fee increases are really only covering inflationary-type increases that we're seeing. It's not really helping us save a lot of money for the future, so.
Because we've seen like the tipping fees for, have gone up. A lot of these fee increases reflect the increased costs of us either buying, or not the water, we own the water, but paying for the water to be treated for our drinking water, or paying the tipping fees to get rid of the trash.
And there is another typo in the memo where it talks about the per thousand gallon fee increase. That's 5% plus 50 cents that's being passed through to Project 7, not 15 cents. Last year, it was 15 cents. So that's another area that we will update, make sure that the packet is correct, but that is reflected in the fees. And I did do a little calculation, if you all are interested, I thought you might, to a residential customer, these fees will actually increase their monthly bill by about $7.94, depending on their water usage. That was calculated on 3,000 gallons of water used per month. And that's for a customer that has water, sewer, and trash with the city.
Okay, so that reflects across the board, someone who's paying the city for their water and their sewer and their trash.
As a residential customer, yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay. So we will be seeing this at an upcoming meeting for a vote to approve the fee schedule for 2024.
That's correct. We'll have that on the regular city council meeting agenda, November 7th.
Okay, thank you. So that was our last discussion item for work session, and now we'll go to general city council. Anyone want to bring up essentially what I would maybe say is new business? Any comments from council for discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you for chiming in again, since I can't actually see you.
So I went over to Denver for the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee meeting, and the new policy committee chair did an excellent job. It was a very productive meeting, and I will just kind of let everybody know that, that Colorado Municipal League is keeping a very close eye on pending legislation on the items that are really going to be impactful for our local community. And it was, I'll send an email to the rest of council at some point, letting you know kind of a little bit more of a synopsis of what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for representing the city of Montrose on the policy committee meeting. It's important. Okay. Council, I mean, staff, any staff comments for work session? Oh, yeah.
Just a quick reminder that tomorrow at 4:30, we're going to have a 2024 budget open house in this room, starting at 4:30.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Then I will say our work session is over. We'll see you tomorrow evening for budget open house prior to the regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:00. Thanks.